Good morning. Today is October 17, 2019. I'd like to welcome you and Paul Reynolds to our meeting today and turn it over to Gary for a roll call.
Yes, Chair. First staff support today, Stephen Madcor, County Council, Kevin Moss, Clerk to the Board, roll call Commissioner Humberston.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Chair Bernard.
Here. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm sorry you don't have to come there.
I always kind of turn around and make sure everyone's standing and ready to go.
Yeah, that's good.
All right. Well, up first, I'd like to announce that the Board recesses as a Board of County Commissioners. Thanks for coming today. Oh, and reconvene as the Housing Authority Board for the next item. With that, again, introduce Paul Reynolds, our Housing Authority Commissioner.
Thank you.
Gary?
As is the Housing Authority Consent Agenda is the item, and Kevin will read that.
All right. Thank you Administrator Schmidt. We have approval of Resolution Number 1941, Approval of the Fiscal Year 2020 Annual Plan Amendment.
Nothing more. Do any Commissioners wish to remove this item from the consent agenda? Seeing not want none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you again very much. Appreciate your time.
Thanks for coming, Paul. Yeah.
And with that, I'll announce that the Board will now adjourn as the Housing Authority Board and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting. And what's up next?
We have a presentation, Commissioners, on earthquake preparedness and the Clackamas County Great, Clackamas County Shake-Out Drill, which is today. Nancy Bush and Jamie Poole from Disaster Management will present.
Think you're gonna have to talk really slow to get to 17 minutes after.
Well, we have a video.
Oh, good.
So, good morning. And yes, as Administrator Schmidt said, today is the Great Shake-Out, which we'll be doing at 10:17 this morning. So, we wanted to come and just provide you, as well as the public, with some information about how to be prepared, why we do the shake-out, the importance of it, and what people should do during the shake-out. So, Jamie Poole from Disaster Management is going to provide the presentation for you.
Good morning. So, at 10:17 this morning, we will actually alert our employees with an employee alert through our notification system. This is new this year, so that will start going out, and that will remind all of our employees to drop cover and hold on. And this is the proper protective action to take during an earthquake. We do not want to move around and run around and try to get out the building during an earthquake when the shaking is continuing. So, we recommend that you drop cover, hold on. We have a video that will demonstrate that for you. But I do want to mention that during a smaller crustal fault line earthquake, it may be seconds of shaking. It might seem really quick, but during a large Cascadia Subduction Zone type earthquake, it could be up to minutes, even six minutes of shaking. So, we want to stop, drop cover and hold on, and then wait until the shaking stops before we move around. So, Kevin, if we want to play that video?
Hi, I'm Jay Wilson with Clackamas County Disaster Management. We all know and appreciate how beautiful our county is, but it's essential that we all remember that this area is prone to earthquakes. Hi, I'm Jay Wilson with Clackamas County Disaster Management. We all know and appreciate how beautiful our county is, but it's essential that we all remember that this area is prone to earthquakes. We live in earthquake country. I've worked in the field of disaster preparedness for over 20 years, and let me tell you, knowing what to do when the ground starts shaking is very important. It really can make the difference in reducing your risk of injury. Here's how you can prepare. Your limited experience with earthquakes may give you a false sense of safety. Perhaps you did nothing or ran outside, and you survived with no injuries. You may even have crawled under a desk and later felt you overreacted. You likely have never experienced the intense shaking as possible from a strong earthquake. Back-and-forth motion of several feet per second can cause the ground to jerk out from under you, potentially sending airborne every unsecured object around you. This is why you need to learn to immediately protect yourself after that first jolt and not wait to see if the earthquake will be strong. Rescue teams dispatched to seismic events around the world all agree that drop, cover, and hold on is the appropriate action to reduce injury and even death during an earthquake. When the shaking begins, drop onto your hands and knees. This position protects you from falling and allows you to move if necessary. Cover your head, neck, and your entire body if possible under a sturdy table or desk. Hold on to your shelter until the shaking stops, and be prepared to move with your shelter if the shaking shifts it around. If there is no table or desk nearby, go to an interior wall or low-lying furniture and cover your head and neck with your arms and hands. If you are driving, coast to the side of the road, stop and set the parking brake. Avoid bridges and stay inside the vehicle until the shaking stops. If you use a wheelchair or have mobility impairments, set the wheel lock, bend forward, and protect your head and neck with your arms or a pillow. If you're in bed, stay put, hold on to the bed, and protect your head with a pillow. While images of collapsed structures and earthquakes can be frightening, most buildings in the United States do not collapse. Studies of injuries and deaths caused by earthquakes show that you're much more likely to be injured by falling or flying objects. Drop, cover, and hold on will help protect you from these injuries. You will be more likely to react quickly when shaking begins if you have actually practiced how to protect yourself. Millions of people will be practicing drop, cover, and hold on during the Great Shake-Out. Join me and hundreds of thousands of Oregonians because practice makes perfect sense. When the shaking starts, you don't want to think about what to do, you want to know what to do. It could save your life. Hi, I'm Jay Wilson with Clackamas County Disaster Management. We all know.
Thank you.
Oh, let's start it over.
So, the reason that we are participating in this drill today is because there is a state statute that actually requires that we do a shake-out or a drop, cover, hold-on drill. So, we have aligned it with the Great Shake-Out so that we are in coordination with the state and others in the nation. The next protective action measure that you'd actually be taking following an earthquake is to evacuate the building following the, after the shaking stops. And today, we're not going to evacuate this building, but there are five county facilities that are practicing that protective measure. The Juvenile Building, Community Corrections Main Street Building, Family and Community Connections Willamette Building, and then Behavioral Health has two clinics, the Hilltop Clinic and the Stewart Clinic that will evacuate following their drop, cover, hold-on drill. We also have recommendations for every employee and community member to have a family disaster or emergency plan, as well as items to live off following a large disaster such as an earthquake. We recommend that folks have about two weeks of supplies, but understand that some people may not be able to have that many supplies. So, any supplies that they can have on hand to help is better than nothing. We do recommend that you have a home kit, and that's where you would have the two weeks of supplies for yourself, including food and water, and shelter and disaster sanitation saved for yourself. We then also recommend a vehicle kit, so items to shelter in place or use to get to your family meeting place. We also recommend a work kit, so items that you may have stored at work that you can use if you're stuck for a prolonged period of time. After the drop, cover, hold-on drill today, employees will also have the opportunity of using our employee disaster reporting process to report in, and we actually have several employees that volunteer as call takers to take those calls, and they're active at our Emergency Operations Center right now, set up to start taking those calls after the shake-out. And then, that actually rolls into a bigger process that we have here at the county. That's our Continuity of Operations Plan Program. So, all of our departments are working on updates to their continuity of operations plans, and that is really for a smaller incident for a facility that, or if they're missed, sorry, if their facility is out of order or they're missing staff for some type of reason, it's a, the plan is for how to resume their operations. So, when we're looking at a large-scale disaster where all of our county facilities may be impacted, those plans really help us at an administrative level to figure out what we're resuming first, and then we're looking at our staffing needs, and the disaster employee reporting helps us determine how our staff are doing and how we can staff and resume our operations at the county. So, today, we are expecting that we will have our alert start at 10:17, so in three minutes. So, what we will do here in this building is, once that starts, we will drop, cover, and hold on where we are. And I just want to mention to those in the room that do not have a table that they can get under, that it is best to find an interior wall that does not have too much hanging above it. Maybe pick a wall that has less heavy of an item on the wall, and then not go towards the windows, so that you would drop, cover, and hold on in those areas. And then again, we will not evacuate this building. Other buildings will do that.
So, in addition to, I just want to say, if we did have something like this, the coup plans, which are critical, and we're working with our departments to make sure that they're done, we're shooting for 85% done by the end of June, the end of the fiscal year. But one of the things we would do after that point is, the continuity of government would be the question. So, I would be in contact with Administrator Schmidt at that time, and that is, as Jamie said, that is an administrative decision. It's like, so what do we start doing first? And of course, at that time, too, we would probably, Administrator Schmidt would come to the Board as well, and we would probably devise a plan and provide you with that plan and say, do you agree with that? Debris is going to be one of our biggest challenges during such an event. We have a debris plan that is this close to being finished. We have one more contract we have to get out, and we would start working on that immediately. Debris is one of, like I said, one of the most important things, and also is going to cost the county the most. If you look at debris plans and clearing of debris for other large disasters, it's in the millions of dollars, and the county is on the hook for that until FEMA can reimburse us. And we have the plan so that we do it all right, because if you don't do it all right, we don't get the reimbursement. So, I just wanted to mention that, too, because you're going to see a lot of debris in this, and that's probably where we will start. So...
So, Ken had a comment or a question.
What's the percentage of reimbursement from FEMA on our costs after a major disaster, assuming we go over the threshold?
Right. So, for debris, it is usually 90 to 100%.
Okay.
If we do our job very, very well. For everything else, it's 75 cents on the dollar. But the good part is, is that if we have, and we do our records well.
(Audio of a real earthquake). This is an earthquake drill. Right now, drop, cover, and hold on. Drop to the floor now. During a large earthquake, the ground might jerk strongly and knock you down. Take cover under something sturdy to protect yourself from objects that can be thrown across the room. Hold on to your shelter until the shaking stops. If you can't get under something, stay low and protect your head and neck with your arms. Now, look around. What objects might fall or be thrown at you, they should secure in place before a real earthquake. This drill is over. Visit shakeout.org for simple steps to help you survive and recover from a major earthquake. Thank you for taking part in the Great Shake-Out.
We're all clear.
We were ready. We're good.
I'm kind of curious if we should...
This is not backwards.
And you get the orange one. Oh, look at this.
This is my own personal.
Please keep your hats on for a few moments for photo op.
Oh, is that right?
I'm just worried that we're gonna mess up Jim's hair.
Yeah. I normally don't wear hats because it causes baldness. And since I'm thinning, I think I can get away with it.
Oh, I thought we were done.
Thank you.
So, to finish up that particular question, so if we've done a good job with our volunteers and making sure our volunteers sign in and out, that volunteer time can be used as part of our match, that 25% match. And some locals have made, I mean, they, it's like, half of their match or more has come from volunteer work. So, other questions about that? I know, you're like, what was I asking? About the match?
God is shaking.
Yeah, you're all shaking.
And record-keeping is probably one of the most critical aspects of it in terms of reimbursement. So, I mean, you literally keep records on everything, including the number of hours volunteers work.
Right.
How many pencils and pieces of paper you needed to respond, et cetera. I'm assuming you have the record-keeping process well in hand?
Yeah, we do. Yes, we do have the record-keeping. We work with our branch managers to make sure that they understand everything that they have to track and what we need. We do have a software that we use as well, and we also have a documentation unit that takes all the documentation and makes sure that, makes sure that it is, you know, completed and that it is stored appropriately as well.
Do you have paper ledgers available in case computers aren't working in order to keep the records?
Yes, we do. Yes, yes. Anytime you want to come down, we can show you the big tower thing we have that has a bunch of paper.
I'm sort of asking questions, I'm sort of asking questions for other people to...
No, yeah. But yeah, and we're happy to show anyone that. Yes, we do, sir.
Thank you.
Three copies.
Yeah, triplicate everything, no. So, real quickly, I would like to walk through just a brief exercise. So, now that we, it's not shaking anymore, but we probably have some debris falling. So, what are some of the first things that you're doing as a commission? And while you're thinking about that, I'll let you know, and Jamie's will let you know, what I'm probably doing. My family's in Missouri, so I am probably sending them a text, trying to, or going on Facebook if I can, to say, yes, I'm okay. And then I'm obviously in touch with Administrator Schmidt, and we're starting to work through the issues and from the top to bottom. And this is a normal day at work. All my staff are here. We're opening the EOC. Jamie?
So, I would be likewise, I'd be trying to text with my family, and then they know that I would be responding if there was something happening, and we've communicated that. So, they are aware that I would be likely staying at work for a while.
So, just a brief conversation about what you guys might be doing.
Well, first, I'd leave the building.
Okay.
Then I'd probably text the family, but, and then I'd probably head over with you.
Okay.
And we may have to gather and do a declaration, emergency declaration.
Yes, and that's one of the first things I would be working with my county council on, as well as Administrator Schmidt, to get that done.
And then, so I've gone to some of those simulations and watched people, how they did it, and had some questions and some recommendations. I don't know if they took them, but I got them. And then probably, once that happened, we'd see, you know, routes home. I also had a question. Last, well, I think last year, a few months ago, I bought a pack through somebody.
Yes.
That had two weeks' supply of stuff. Is that available anywhere?
That is always available, and I can get the information to you about whether we got those. We did not do that program this year because we didn't sell very many last year. So, we'll probably do that again next year because we think as staff turns over that we have more. But I'm happy to send you the website.
Yeah. Okay. Other people? Comments, questions? What would you be doing? Martha?
I'd be texting my sons first because they live here, and I'd be more worried about them. Then I would get ahold of my daughters, but one's in Boston and one's in England, so they would be more worried about. But it would have to be the boys first. And I'd essentially, if we were all here, I would try and see, you know, where we needed to go. We'd probably head all over to the emergency center together. And if I was at home, I would hopefully not be digging out as my house might slip into the lake, maybe.
Or be swimming out?
I'd be swimming out. But if I was at home in the neighborhood, I would be checking in with neighbors. I'd be checking in with that, my whole community, to see what's happening, and then communicating with you guys via text or phone.
Okay.
I imagine texting would be the one that would be the most workable, because wouldn't we have cell towers down as well?
Yes, most likely, yes. And texting is more likely to go through because it doesn't take as much bandwidth. Yep.
Paul?
Yeah, well, we never know where we're gonna be when something like that happens. So, I think the first thing I'm inclined to do always is look out for the welfare of others that's been through earthquakes before. You know, those in your surroundings, to make sure that no one's in need of any kind of emergency care or whatnot, even though I'm not a doctor. But, so then, and followed by, you know, any kind of means of communication. I'm just concerned, frankly, that, you know, it could be so bad that maybe even things, communication isn't even there, even text. I mean, I don't go through. And I, I just kind of wonder if there's actually an exercise, I imagine we could, where, you know, whether the region or the state could actually just take out a 15-minute period or a 30-minute period and say, we want everyone to just send texts to one another and actually see what our capacity is and see if it actually will sustain itself. And that's under the assumption of a working system where there is no physical damage.
I didn't even know that was on.
That may be our...
See, we have communication now.
Yeah, I say that may be our notification.
But, you know, I'm concerned, because going through the 9/11 experience, there was a lot of things where things just shut down because of overload, but that was a national issue, but...
Totally agree.
And the call is from Vicki Harkith from Emergency Management, Clackamas County Emergency Management.
It's our main program line, so if you had that programmed as her before and your phone might be, yeah.
Yeah. So, and it's a missed call, so I don't know what that was. And usually I have the song.
You will have the message.
Your alert. So, I think our alert system, we launched it, or I programmed it, launched at 10:17, but that goes to show technology, it's, it takes a little bit of time to get it out till 2,000-plus employees.
Well, sure.
So, I guess I was glad it was on.
We'd probably be out of here before it actually arrived.
And you had to have your cellphone number in your ESS, too. So, otherwise, it may be going to your phone, desk phone.
Yeah. Sonya, what would you do?
I must be on your emergency management.
So, I have this little card on my keychain.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, so if necessary, I have the information there to report, and I think that's important. So, from my view, I understand that Chair Bernard is first on an emergency declaration. If he can't be reached, then I'm on deck for emergency declaration, and if I'm not available, then Martha's next, and then Paul, and then Ken.
That's correct.
In order of seniority. So, I would report as fast as I could, provided that I can, and then I will wait for the call.
Okay.
And check in with neighbors, check in with family, but make sure that I'm available to work with Nancy and Gary and Stephen on that emergency declaration.
Thank you.
Ken?
Well, again, it depends on where you are. If I'm at home, first thing I'm gonna do is turn off water, electric, and gas, and make sure my wife's okay. And then I'm gonna contact the offices and see what I need to do to help. For here, I'm gonna contact my wife, make sure she's okay, and then see what I can do to help, working with this team and with Gary, so...
Do you have gas?
Yes.
Does she know how to turn it off?
Yes.
Yes, and Commissioner Humberston, too, has an advantage. He has a ham operator who lives next door.
Yeah. Also, if I was, again, if I was at home, I'd get the generator going to make sure that food can be kept cold, and it'd be all right.
Yes, and so also just to mention, too, the governor would also make a state declaration at that time as well. We would need to do our own, too, as quickly as we could, but there would be a state one, and most likely, if it's a Cascadia 9.0, there would be a federal one that comes down pretty quickly. So, we would start moving, and we may not even be in our building because we don't know what kind of damage might be there. So, we do have a backup EOC, which is in the Elections or the Cut Building. We are gonna be looking at putting, making the first floor of the DSP the backup EOC, which would be very, a good place to have it. So, we may have a backup there very soon. So, other questions?
I don't think I have the little card, so I would...
Okay, actually, we, I know Jamie sent them up, so we'll check to make sure...
You got another one? Well, this is not uncommon for me.
I think Kevin had them.
I will take care of that. We have that for you, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
And mine was on my desk just a couple, few days ago.
Okay.
So, maybe yours got put on your desk.
Seen mine.
Mine's so clean, I should...
Kevin, I think Kevin has them, so he'll make sure you get one, Commissioner.
No, we have piles, but they're not obscuring my desk, but, okay, so let's just make sure...
You'll find in a couple weeks. Kevin can give you a new one. That's fine.
Give you a new one, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, next up is Citizen Communication. Anyone out there like to speak?
Room's packed.
Well, it looks like we can move past that to the Consent Agenda, and I'd ask the clerk to read the Consent Agenda by title.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On today's Consent Agenda, under Health, Housing, and Human Services, we have Approval of Revenue Grant Amendment Number One with the State of Oregon Department of Education for Clackamas County Early Learning Hub Preschool Promise Capacity Building. Approval of Interagency Agreement with Clackamas County Health Centers Division for School-Based Health Centers Operating Funds. Amendment to the Subrecipient Agreement with Northwest Housing Alternatives and Community Development Division for Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Funding. Approval of an Agency Services Agreement Number 8345. Amendment Number Five with Mount Hood Home Care Services LLC to provide Oregon Project Independence in Home Care for Clackamas County Residents. Under our Department of Transportation Development, Approval of a Contract with National Safety Council for the Purposes of Safe Systems Approach Rural Road to Zero. Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement between Clackamas County and the City of Oregon City related to Plan Review Permitting and Inspection Services, including Clarification of Inspection Roles During Times of Emergencies. Approval of a Contract with Murray Smith, Inc. for the Jennings Lodge, Oregon 99E to Oakfield Road Project. Approval of Personal Services Contract with David Evans and Associates to provide Design Services for the Cambry-Markham Highway Bear Creek Bridge. Under our Finance Department, Approval of Amendment Number Three to the Intergovernmental Agreement between Water Environment Services in Clackamas County for Facilities Management and Maintenance. Approval of Purchase of Annual Technical Support Services from Oracle America. Under Elected Officials, we have seven individual items relating to the Sheriff's Department. So, these are Approval of Intergovernmental Agreements between Clackamas County Sheriff's Office and the Oregon State Police, West Lynn Police Department, Maloma County Sheriff's Office, Milwaukee Police Department, Oregon City Police Department, Gladstone Police Department, and the Gresham Police Department for the Use of the Public Safety Training Center and the Bowman Training Complex. Under Business and Community Services, Approval of Amendment Number Three to an Intergovernmental Agreement with the City of Gladstone to Provide Library Director Services. And under North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, Approval of Contract between the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District and Invis for District-Wide Mechanical and HVAC Services. And finally, underwater Environment Services, Approval of Amendment Number Three to the Intergovernmental Agreement between Water Environment Services and Clackamas County for Facilities Management and Maintenance. And Approval of a Service Connection Mortgage in the North Clackamas Service Area between Water Environment Services and Marina D. Healy, Trustee of the Thomas E. Godfrey Living Trust. And that concludes today's Consent Agenda.
Thank you. Do any Commissioner...
in the North Clackamas Service Area between Water Environment Services and Marina D. Healy, trustee of the Thomas E. Godfrey Living Trust. And that concludes today's Consent Agenda.
Thank you. Do any commissioners want to remove an item or pull an item from the Consent Agenda?
I don't want to pull it. Just want to just maybe get a clarification from the administrator on the agreement for library services with the City of Gladstone and ask the administrator if that is, if there is another agreement we're working on, or does that agreement take care of everything that we discussed recently?
So my understanding, this does not take care of everything. This is your confirmation of this. Actually, it is signed by the mayor of Gladstone. I thought, I'll have to check, Commissioner, because I thought there was still work on the IGA to be signed, based on the concerns that we had talked about previously.
So, well, I didn't expect that response, but did you, so I'm willing to go forward and approve that, but I just, I just wanted more information. I wasn't, I had no intention of disrupting that. So are you indicating we should move forward?
I recommend you move forward. Yes.
Okay, great.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the, whoops, excuse me. I move we approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
It's moved and seconded and seconded that we approve the Consent Agenda. Any further discussion?
Actually, I can clarify. So this, I apologize. This is regarding that the county is going to operate the Gladstone Library Services, that intergovernmental agreement. There's a separate intergovernmental agreement about the two projects working together and the construction and the project design. That's another agreement we're working on. This is simply that we are going to operate the current library services for Gladstone, a separate IGA.
Great. Thank you. That's the clarification I was seeking.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. With that, county administrator update?
Yes, Commissioners, I'd like to, again, share with you some good news that our staff and departments are doing here at Clackamas County. First, Water Environment Services has an update regarding the 82nd Drive Pedestrian Bridge Project. This bridge spans the Clackamas River between Oregon City and Gladstone. Part of the construction work involves pile driving on the Gladstone side. Water Environment Services has received word that the pile driving was completed much earlier than expected. After seismic upgrades are complete, this bridge should be able to withstand a magnitude 9.0 earthquake and provide passage across the river for emergency vehicles so such an event occur. So this will perhaps be one of the only access points between the river should we have an earthquake of that magnitude. So the bridge itself is scheduled to reopen in February. So thank you to our staff for, again, completing work ahead of schedule. Next, want to recognize the Department of Transportation and Development, our Building Codes Inspectors Travis Wright and Johnny Gish, and Plans Examiner Supervisor Richard Carlson, who all were recognized for their work involving the Willamette View Retirement Community in Oak Grove. That community needs help navigating through the development process as it expands its site. Officials at Willamette View recently wrote and said, "I needed to let you know that both Travis and Johnny have been great to work with, and I know their influence goes a long way. I look forward to working with you and your team as we lean into the next layer of planning. Thank you, thank you, thank you for your support over these many years." So thank you to Travis, Johnny, and Richard for their excellent work as they serve the public of Clackamas County.
Thank you.
Thank you. Honored Commissioner of Communication. Ken, you're up first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be short and sweet today. We went to AOC, Association of Oregon Counties, on Monday, and I participated in the Veterans Subcommittee, Forestry Subcommittee, Public Safety Subcommittee, and Public Health Subcommittees. I've met twice, with two community organizations, a CPO and a Kiwanis Club regarding the courthouse, and gave them a presentation on the whats, whys, and wherefores of the courthouse. And finally, had a present, a meeting today with the staff on our CLT project slash courthouse, CLT project, both. And the project out in Estacada is moving forward. We should be having a groundbreaking in the not-too-distant future. The state has come up with money for the road that was necessary. We really want to thank the Oregon Department of Transportation for that. And the students groups have been interviewed for the courthouse design groups from the university under our Wood Innovations Grant, and we should be getting presentations on their designs sometime, I believe, in December is what the plan is. So it's all moving forward. Thank you.
And there is no dog today.
Okay. With that, Paul?
Yeah, well, we've had several meetings, and when it came to Commissioner comments, there was not a lot of time to expand on a number of things. So I'm going to take one portion of what I wanted to talk about and share that today and maybe expand on it a little bit. Lot of concerns about the homeless situation in the region, and a lot of questions as to why the homeless in Portland area is growing faster than perhaps, or even the state of Oregon faster than any other part of the country. And another question that came up, our observation is, is why did it grow so fast or sharply in the Oak Grove area in the last four years? And the other question is, why is this region have the highest amount of children that are homeless and growing at the fastest rate of anywhere in the country? I think those are some serious questions that we need to have some serious dialogue around. And I was hoping, really frankly, that there would be opportunity at our recent retreat amongst ourselves for a free-flow discussion on some of the big issues. Though we did talk about homeless, and we did talk about strategies, we really didn't have really an open dialogue. And I really think that that is really needed. And now's not the time, per se, but I think it's time to broach the topic and set something up to where we can have that. At a recent Association of Counties, our counties, the states divided up in districts, our District Eight group met, and we agreed that we'll have a summit. I don't necessarily know as big as the topic is and different facets of that topic, if we'll be able to broach all the things I want to talk about particularly today. But the most important one, as I outlined earlier, about why, why we are growing faster than any other part of the country, why in the Oak Grove area did the rents rise at the highest rate in the region, though it rose all statewide, but it rose the highest in that area. You know, all these, all the questions that I think need a good answer, those are indicators. Those are something we need to pay attention to. And I've been advocating even prior to some of the investments that have made in the region that I've seen, not just anecdotal evidence, but very compelling evidence that there's an association between government investment and when we build these wonderful transportation-oriented developments and we make these substantial investments, that the area that we make these investments in becomes unaffordable. In the state of California, in the areas with the hardest hit, there's a recognition that they feel that the most affordable housing that there is is the existing housing. And they say that because the cost of building any kind of housing today is so, is exorbitant. And to, so when we say that we're going to build more affordable housing, that, that really is a technical term that is more associated for people that are in need, that don't have the resources. So we're trying to provide something that is more affordable for them. But at the current construction rates and the current state of affairs, the cost of land values and so forth, they're not affordable. Talking to professors up and down the western United States who specialize in this, been looking at this, and even recently this week, they have made associations, even written white papers as to the association of transportation-oriented developments, transportation investments, land use policies and everything that, I'm not going to say are the cause, but they're big contributors, big contributors to that. And I always felt that government should be, in this area, part of the solution and not be part of the problem. So my plea to my colleagues is that we need to really take a hard look and be very careful about what we do to make sure we are not exacerbating the problem. And that is primarily the topic of which I spent an hour and a half with, talking to a professor at PSU earlier this week. A couple of things that I'm concerned about, especially with the Oak Grove area and other parts of the county and the region. Some of the triggers of rapidly rising land values or gentrification and displacement. And displacement, what displacement is, displacement is when people are forced to move out of an area for a particular reason. In this case, the context is the cost of housing. The rents rise or the affordability of the area is so high that they are displaced. And that's, that's, when that's unexpected, and that's because of affordability, that is a life-changing experience for a lot of people. And some of the triggers for that, that seem to contribute to that. Number one, transportation-oriented development. Number two, zone changes. Number three, light rail transportation kind of investments, or heavy, or bus rapid transit, or substantial transportation investments that encourage people to want to live near it. And a lot of governments say we need to build these facilities for the people that can't afford it. And yet, ironically, what's happened in this area, and a study in 2017 proved that. PSU did some work, basically showed that everywhere we've done that, the areas are actually very unaffordable and the most expensive areas in the region. So transportation-oriented development, zone changes, light rail, and another one that contributes to all of this is urban renewal. And it's very touching. I think that it's, when it's prescribed and done carefully, urban renewal can do good things. But if it's not, then that becomes a problem. And I think that it was, Chair Bernard recently said, and I would really like to help understand what his comments were, and some of these are not in his control, per se, some are. And that is that, as the region's looking forward to transportation investments with this T-2020 bond, I'm very concerned that we are not really looking or taking that lens, and we are moving at such a fast rate that we're not being really considerate or careful. And we are moving towards passing a bond prior to forming proper solutions and policies and things to, means to mitigate that issue of growing or exacerbating the homeless count. It's predicted that after this housing bond is built out, all the housing that the voters passed last year, when that housing is completed, that will have more people homeless than we do today. Not because the housing bond passed, but because the problem is out of control, and we need to get at least some means to mitigate that. But I do want to ask Chair Bernard, because of a comment yesterday and previous comments about his interest in looking back at urban renewal again and trying to revive that, and Metro's interest in doing a light rail study along McLaughlin. As I cited earlier, we've seen the highest rate of homelessness, the highest increase in rents in the region, and I think that's something that needs to be addressed. And I'm concerned that there's too much anxiety or interest in accelerating without having the answers. And I, so I, I think we need to have a dialogue. Now is not the time, per se. Maybe there's time for a little bit of discussion about that, but I think we really need to set the table for a regional discussion, or at least a county discussion with some other leaders about how we get in front of this with some people that have education and background in this and have done that. I've read a lot of documents, and this is something that we need to take our job seriously. It is on behalf of the people that we serve, and it is very concerning to me. And that's what I have for today.
Okay, Sonya.
Am I next?
Yep.
Oh, I am. Thank you, Chair Bernard. So this day of being the Great Shakeout Day is important because resilience is something that we must focus on when we look at our communities and our roles in our communities. I don't know if all of my colleagues were with, with me. I think you all were on the day that we had the community leaders meeting way back. I was a new commissioner, and I'll never forget walking into the meeting, and there are two buckets sitting up there, and I believe Nancy Bush was presenting on what you do when, when there is the great earthquake. And all of us have done the tour of the wastewater treatment plant. We've probably all asked the question, when you go underground there, it's like, well, what happens during the big earthquake? If these pipes, are they secure? Will they be damaged? What will we do? All of those questions. Well, those, at the great, at the community leaders meeting when we were there, it's actually a little comical thing in my family because Kirk was walking in that day to pick me up from that meeting, and there was the big orange pee bucket and the big orange poo bucket. And that was his, one of his first introductions to me being a Clackamas County Commissioner. But all laughing aside, these are important issues. And so I really encourage folks, I was actually looking through my iPad, again, because Nancy was talking, and I was thinking, oh, that's right, you need two weeks of food and you need water. And I have a couple of big jugs of water at home, but I'm like, oh, is that enough gallons if we need two weeks? And I'm looking it up, and I'm just thinking, am I prepared? One thing that I haven't done to prepare, which was on the list, was make sure you have all your documents, your important documents, a copy of your passport, your driver's license, those types of things ready in case of an emergency. Just important to keep educating ourselves. One of the most important things, which all of our commissioners mentioned today, was connecting with our neighbors. We should absolutely be doing that before there is an event. Connect, have the numbers of your neighbors, connect with who's doing what. Really build community now, because you never know when those will come due and really need to be implemented. And as a county government, our, one of our greatest jobs is public safety and building community and quality of community. So really, really important. I'm really thankful, Gary, that we do this as a county and bring this awareness and that we all get under the table because hopefully we won't ever have a Cascadia. But if we do, we will be more prepared because of the thoughtful public awareness about it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Martha?
Yeah, what I'd like to mention is that I'm, as someone who owns two dogs, a 100-pound Labradan and a 14-pound Pomeranian. One of the things that we also have to think about in an earthquake is what happens to our pets. And when we look at farms and farmland, there's livestock issues. We have the highest number of horses of any county in the state, actually. And the bottom line is, we also have to think about not only our families, our children, what's happening in schools, but there will also be incidents with our pets, whether or not they survive and how they also get food and water. So that was one of the other things that kind of crossed my mind is, you know, what do we do with that? We'll probably have stray dogs, cats, and, and, you know, things of that sort as well. So let's think about how we take care of our furry friends as well. Couple of things I wanted to mention. So Monday, the 14th, I was actually, I was, again, at the Association of Oregon Counties. It was my last formal meeting as running the organization as its president. In November, I will introduce all of our meetings, but will step back to the position of past president, and I'm very glad to hand that gavel over. I have to admit, it's been a long year. The organization has been in transition. It's been my privilege to help, help all of our counties, all 36 counties or members, to navigate through that transition as we build a stronger network of what counties need across the state as collaborators and colleagues. And I want to thank my colleagues today for taking up the slack in many ways so I could actually do that work. But my workload there is going to lessen, which means a lot of the things I'm doing this week will, or have done this week, will continue to keep me busy. One of the things that I was very happy to go to today, yesterday, was the employee recognition luncheon. You know, because we really, it was one of the biggest employee recognition luncheons we've had in a long time, as well as on Wednesday, the Leadership Academy Celebration. And I'm very proud to say that my own person, we have policy coordinators who work for all of us, but Emily Kepler, who specifically is the point person for me, graduated, and I'm so happy she took that class. And I let everybody know I am now borrowing all the books that she got in that class because I also think it'll help me be a better, a better commissioner. I had a meeting with Bridget Daisy, who is the Executive Director of our Workforce Board on Wednesday, and then Ruth Atkins and Fahed Brown. Ruth Atkins is the Public and Government Relations Person from Kaiser. They are moving forward with their initiative to connect public health with housing. They are looking at a program that would actually take a closer look and identify those of us who are 55 plus and over who are living, you know, having issues with houselessness and homelessness. And in particular, Sonya and I both know an individual who fits in that age range who is on the cusp of experiencing those kinds of issues. So there is a significant overlay with health and with housing. And that's including our partners in healthcare, our community care organization, Providence, and a number of other stakeholders as we move forward. They are looking at having resources available, which we think that with the work of our housing folks, Fahed and Jill Smith, that we will have access to to help in our continued effort. efforts to address the problem that Commissioner Savas has so eloquently delineated for us here. I did attend the Clackamas Workforce Partnership Board of Directors meeting this morning. Our Workforce Board is one of the nexus that we work with to get people into career fields and pipelines in the various sectors that we have in this county, including manufacturing, healthcare, technology, retail, so on and so forth. They are also committed, as we are, to working with vulnerable people in the, in the, in our counties that actually need a little extra help in getting into that job pipeline for our businesses to have good employees because they recognize the need. I also did a report there basically outlining what our county budget is going through, that we, our current fiscal year is balanced. However, we are going to have to tighten our belt in the coming years and that less than 19% of our property taxes the public pays, we receive, we receive less than that. And that money, about 140 million, goes to general operations, but most of our funds are already dedicated from federal state sources. We have to be on a sustainable path, and that is what we will be doing with our Budget Committee to right-size our budget and ensure that we live within our means. So they were very, very appreciative for that. I also let them know that there is a survey out there at www, where is it, clackamas.us, and we're really asking our constituents and particularly business folks and workforce folks in that profession, what are their priorities? Services for individuals with barriers to employment, affordable housing, rehab, neighborhood revitalization services, housing stabilization and supportive services to people who are homeless, code enforcement services, and land use development review and permitting services. So that survey is out there, so we all need to be aware of that, not just our Workforce Board. So please, citizens of Clackamas County, take a look at that and get your feedback to us. We had a review of the Sunrise Gateway Corridor. I won't go into that in detail except to say that our new staff, Jamie Stastny, who has been the point person to get information out, is doing a fantastic job. And because of her presentation, we will now get a letter of support from our Workforce Board for the Sunrise Gateway Project. I never know what to call it. It used to be the Sunrise Corridor, it was the Sunrise System. Now it's the Sunrise Gateway. No matter what we call it, it's the same. It's the same thing, it's the same thing we've been talking about since I've been here since 2003. I also mentioned our courthouse, letting them know that it's obsolete and that we are working towards getting a new facility. And I explained why, okay? Number one, it is a death trap, in my opinion. My daughter is a prosecutor, I would not want her in that building. It is not, is not friendly to the developmentally disabled. It is not friendly to jurors and to victims of crime who have to be in that room. We need more judges, which, which, because we have a huge, huge backlog in, in cases and it's, it's very necessary. The courthouse is built on basalt, however, any kind of a Cascadian earthquake, it would very easily tremor and slip down into the, into the Willamette River. It is a public safety issue on multiple fronts and we are going to work very hard to convince our constituents the importance of this significant project. Other than that, let me go now to the, should I do the Word of the Week or Arts and Culture? Which comes first, Kevin? Word of the Week. Surprise, surprise. Earthquake, it's noun, a series of vibrations induced in the earth's crust by the abrupt rupture and rebound of rocks in which elastic strain has been slowly accumulating, something that is severely disruptive and upheaval. And here are the facts, 50 detectable earthquakes every day. The largest earthquake in recorded history struck Chile in 1977. It was 9.5 on the Richter scale, the largest one. And the United States wasn't much smaller, 9.2, and it struck Prince William Sound, Alaska in 1964. And as a young child, I'm, as of 11 years old at the time, I remember seeing that on the television. An earthquake is caused by the breaking and shifting of rock beneath the earth's surface, and around 80% of the earthquakes occur in the Pacific Ring of Fire. It circles the Pacific Ocean, touching the coasts of North and South America, Japan, China and Russia. And yes, we are part of the Ring of Fire, which explains why oftentimes we have these earthquake issues. Okay, Arts and Culture in the County, Youth Music Project, Teen Open Mic Night, Friday, October 18th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Meteor Lounge at Youth Music Project. Bring your cover songs or tunes, get on the stage to a welcoming audience in the state-of-the-art Meteor Lounge. Milwaukee History Museum presents Milwaukee Kids. Saturday, October 19th, 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. The Milwaukee History Museum will showcase a collection of artifacts, stories, photographs on the lives and times of youths before the advent of computers and digital devices. And for more information about any event, go to clackamasartsalliance.org. Lastly, Lakewood Center for the Arts at the Headley Main Stage, October 23rd. They're going to have the play, Here We Go Again, at 7:00 p.m. Shakespeare in Love is going to debut at 7:30 on November 1st, and I am hosting the cast party. So colleagues, you're more, won't you come to a fun cast party?
Yeah, when is that? What night?
It's November 1st, I think it's a Friday. And homemade lasagna and all kinds of Italian food, which is what I usually do for the spread.
And what time does that start?
It usually, it's a little later, usually starts by about between 9:30 and 10 because they got to come after the play. It's a little bit later in the night, but it's a great way to meet the artists who do these fantastic plays. And Shakespeare in Love is a really good play. And Clackamas Rep has Wingit for Kids, December 17th and December 14th. It's a way to introduce youngsters to the theater. And those are at 10:30 a.m. So in any case, yeah, and then you'll let us know, West Side Story's coming along.
West Side Story, Week Two open, is it today, Thursday? Yeah, back again tonight. And then the next weekend is the last weekend.
Okay.
And it closes. And I'll have my house back.
Oh, thank you. Okay, Jimbo.
So when I was involved in theater a little bit, because I was dating somebody, we always just had chips and dip.
Not lasagna and yummy.
And it's about 11, 12 o'clock at night, not lasagna. Anyway, you know, one of the things that people seem to forget is that we had a housing crisis. You know, I lived in Villebois at the time and it literally stopped. And Villebois was a quarter of the way done. And because of that, a lot of housing was never built and the population continued to grow and a lot of the middle housing was never built. That is the major cause of where we're at today. And the reason we can't catch up, part of the reason we can't catch up, is the immigration laws. You know, most of Villebois was built by immigrants from Mexico. I mean, the, the whole place was, and from around the world, was built with the help of immigrant carpenters, painters, sheet rockers, plumbers, electricians, and we don't have that anymore. The other thing is, is, you know, I'm interested in talking about urban renewal in, but we made a mistake, before I was here, there was, we made a mistake with urban renewal, a lot of people did, and that is, we built pockets of poverty. We put all the low-income housing in one spot instead of doing what we're doing and looking at mixed, mixed income housing. And I don't think you can blame, you know, the housing crisis on just light rail. I mean, we could say the same thing about the sunrise, Happy Valley is going to allow Happy Valley to grow, but we, I agree in one thing. We, before we do a project like light rail, personally, South Corridor, we need to plan ahead. We need to have the right land use, we need to protect lands, buy lands to build housing, affordable housing around these sites before they're built, because that will allow us the opportunity to do that. As far as light rail down McLaughlin, I have no interest in that at, at this time and I won't as long as I'm here because we have to plan this and we're years from that. Besides the fact, there's no money to do that. You know, we had some meetings about the Oglo Bridge. You know, I'm just still in support of the Oglo Bridge, but we have a community process that needs to be fulfilled. And it doesn't seem like it was. And even though I, I agree, staff has done an outstanding job, and it's not unusual for people to say, you know, we didn't know anything about it. I can tell you that as Mayor of Milwaukee, when we were looking at projects, we would hang doorknob hangers, we would have paper, articles in the paper, we'd have events at the farmer's market, we'd do everything to communicate. We had booths everywhere in the, in the neighborhood associations, everything, and people would say they never heard anything about it. Well, you got to take some responsibility on yourself to get the information about what's happening in your community. We do have a housing crisis. It's partially because we're behind on housing. We, we actually, high-end housing is behind, and when high-end housing is behind, the middle housing people can't move up. And then you got the middle housing that's behind and the people in the lower-income housing can't move into the middle housing. And then you have the lower housing, it's just a huge crisis. But I, I also wanted to mention that I met with the, the chairs from Multnomah and Washington County yesterday for lunch, and Sonya is working on a summit, which will happen in January. I don't know a date yet, but we will, we will have one where we will get this information and hopefully we'll have that discussion Paul's looking for. And, and see how we, as partners, can try to attack this problem. The children, homeless children and families is, is the biggest crisis we have, I think, right now. We got to figure out how to solve that problem. Various groups, Clackamas Women's Services, CASA, Children's Center, other, and schools, and everybody's working on looking at a potential measure in the future that could address that. I do also have concerns about the T-2020 measure, adding additional property taxes. I think that we are property tax burdened and not so much when you don't live in the metro region, but we are when you live in the metro region. So I'm concerned that that is part of the cause of homelessness is that people are being taxed out of their homes. So hopefully we can address that in another way. And I think the T-2020 process is, is really awfully fast and we're missing out on some of the citizen participation. Last night I went, I had to skip my wife's birthday dinner to go to a meeting I could have read in the paper. It was just, you know, two hours of sitting and hearing the same thing I've heard 100 times. So hopefully we don't waste citizens' time and we actually produce something in our summit, which I think we will. You know, the, the biggest, the biggest solution in this region is to work together, build relationships and work together and solve the problem together. And, and we can do that. And we definitely have chairs in three counties that are very much interested in addressing this problem and solving it as much as we possibly can. But population is going to continue to grow, people continue to move here because it's a great place to live. And, you know, I'm, I hope to continue to keep making it a great place to live. And so we'll continue getting those folks here. Climate change, you know, will have a big impact. Don't know exactly what that is. I've heard a little more rain, various, or dry summers, a lot of rain in the winter, and that will cause other challenges. At least in Clackamas County, we don't build a water treatment plant, forget to include the pipes.
Paul? Yeah, well, I turned my light on initially. I don't want my, I was very careful in the words I used, so don't want my comments characterized as blaming, because that was not the point. And I think that it's a complex subject. And I think the words I use contribute, contributing to the problem. And so this is complex and you touched on some of those things that I did not touch on, and that's, that's appreciated. I do want to say that we did meet at this District Eight meeting, the idea of the summit or some kind of a discussion was an idea that I broached, and I want to make sure that the idea and some of these issues are concerned, make sure it's broad enough. I spoke to Chair Cifore afterwards and we discussed this on Tuesday, so I expect also, and, you know, being the person who broached it initially, be part of this. And, and if, if it's not complete enough, then there'll, there'll be an initial need or a need for that kind of conversation to continue in the future. But I, I support it. Otherwise, I wouldn't, wouldn't suggest it in the first place. So I, I believe we agreed that we would work on this together.
I think that if you have some people you want to speak, it might be opportunity to, you know, get that list, you know, get involved, get that list going and get, get some of those speakers.
Well, I'm involved. I'm involved, we just need to be coordinated. I think we need to be coordinated.
Okay. All right. With that, I was hoping to get out of here by 11. We would have made a record, but thank you very much and thank the audience for attending. Have a good day, weekend.